Evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the December 12, 2024, meeting of the City of Gloucester zoning Board of Appeals. This meeting will be held as a hybrid meeting, meaning we are in person, but people can also join the meeting remotely by Zoom. And for the record, the meeting ID on Zoom is 845-3662-9606. Recognize in attendance myself, Joe Perisi, Catherine Schlichty, Michael Nyman, Ronald Wilson, and remotely, James Gelati. And I declare, we have a quorum. We have a lot of hearings tonight, and I'll reiterate our process. If you're on Zoom and you wish to speak at the appropriate time, you'd hit your raise hand button on your device, or if you're on a phone, you dial *9. If you're in the audience, you can just come up to the microphone, whether it's when the time to speak, in favor or opposed. We need you name an address first, for the record. Give us a minute to get that recorded, and then feel free to tell us what you think. First order of business is our consent agenda. It's the approval, granting the Chair approval to sign the following decisions: 7 Cleveland Place, 13 Youngs Road, 186 Main Street, and 272 Main Street. And I'll entertain a motion to approve those decisions.
I would make a motion to approve those four decisions.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Roll call, vote.
Ms. Schlichty?
Yes.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Gelati?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Perisi?
Yes. Okay, the decisions are approved. Our first application of the evening is the petition of William and Catherine Brown, seeking to modify an existing variance pursuant to 1.7.4 and a special permit under 1.9, 5.24, to construct a second-floor accessory dwelling unit at 4 Pigeon Lane. Are the Browns here, or are they on? Oh, yeah, you gotta come on up. Tell us about your project and what you're doing.
Yeah, so we got...
Name and address.
BG Brown, 4 Pigeon Lane.
That might, Joe.
You gotta have that right to you, while they can't hear you at home.
All right, it's BG Brown, and it's 4 Pigeon Lane. And we, my wife and I got a permit to build a barn, 15-by-30-foot barn. We got a variance so we could put it sort of block close to our property lines, because our property's not very big. And as we're beginning to start the process of building, we were told that it was, you know, a lot easier to get an ADU permit, because I know years ago, my parents had looked into it, and it was nearly impossible for them. What's that?
Yeah, you need to hold the mic. Right up to you.
Anyway, so we're reapplying and trying to get permission to put an apartment upstairs so that our kids could come back and live in town.
When you got the variance, one of the situations or condition or whatever was, there was only going to be electricity. Are you gonna have to bring water and sewer to this now?
We will.
And that's available there on the street?
Yep.
So, yeah, it is a little different with an ADU. One of the things where the workshop was not a big issue, where it was pre-existing structure, but also it wasn't going to be a living space. But any other questions right now by the board?
With the neighbor.
Yeah. Okay, well, that's good. We all reviewed your plans. We'll take some testimony from the public. You can take a seat for now.
Yeah, I did speak. My neighbor up the hill is the one that it would most directly affect, and I spoke with him last week, and he said, yeah, he's got no objections whatsoever.
Okay. All righty. We'll take, open the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application? Anyone in favor, please come forward, or if you're on Zoom, raise your hand. See anyone? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Any opposition, please come forward or raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll close the public testimony. Discussion by the board.
So, I don't, I don't see that restriction. I mean...
Did you read the decision?
Yeah.
It just talked about the electricity only, but I don't think it was necessarily a deal breaker.
Oh, okay. So, really, what the applicant is looking for is a special permit for ADU.
It's still a, it's still a 15-by-30 structure, all right? So, we've already approved where it is. You're not going over the height. You're just asking for an ADU 2.4.5.
Yeah. And then to modify the variance to the extent that sewer and...
Water and sewer.
Well, water and sewer. Yeah, I think it's a nice, I think it's a nice project. It's a small building. It's not, it's actually what the ADU ordinance was designed for, to take these smaller buildings on the lot and make housing out of it. I don't have any questions.
Any else? All set? Want to entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion. On the petition of William and Catherine Brown, seeking to modify an existing variance and a special permit to allow for the construction of accessory dwelling unit, I would move modification of the existing variance to allow for water and sewer in the building, and the good cause exists to modify that. You can't have an ADU without water and sewer in the building. And I would move approval for the accessory dwelling unit, as it meets all the criteria. It's 900 square feet or less. So, I'd move approval of both those.
I'd second on both of those.
A motion made and seconded on the modify a variance and a special permit to allow an ADU. Roll call, vote.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes, on the variance and the special permit.
Mr. Gelati?
Yes.
Ms. Schlichty?
Yes, on the variance, yes, on the special permit.
Mr. Perisi?
Yes. Heard our decision's favorable. I will be drafting a decision, and once that goes through the process and gets approved next month, you'll be able to wait your appeal time and then go forward. The office will notify you. Okay, our next hearing is the petition of Elizabeth Norman, seeking a special permit pursuant to 1.9, to alter and expand a non-conforming structure by adding dormers at 1 Highland Street.
Hi, Liz Norman, 1 Highland Street.
Can you hold that mic? Put it right in your chair, if you would.
Is it on?
You might have turned it on.
How's this?
Better.
Elizabeth Norman, 1 Highland Street.
Okay. Tell us about your project.
So, my, my parents have owned this building since they were first married in the 70s, and I now live there. I moved back to help out and take over management of the property. So, and my, the third-floor unit has pitched walls in every room, making it very challenging. The kitchen is tiny and basically off of the entryway, and the bedroom and living room both have limited headrooms. So, the idea was to add some dormers. We were very thoughtful, or we tried to be very thoughtful about effectively using the footprint, as well as limiting, like, making sure there was no increase in the overall roof height and impacting the neighbors. And I think we were hopefully successful in that. And so, the idea is just to be able to make a bathroom and a kitchen that are more functional, and a bedroom and a living room that have headroom and are more, more usable.
Okay, thank you. Any immediate questions?
Pretty straightforward.
Seems pretty straightforward. Some dormers, no height extension. Okay, we'll take public testimony. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application, please raise your hand or come forward. Anyone in favor? See nothing? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application? None, we'll close public testimony. You can, you can sit. You're good. So, yeah, pretty straightforward, alter and expand, no increase in the footprint, no height increases to speak of.
I can make a motion if you want.
Pretty cut and dry, please. Mike.
Petition of Elizabeth Norman, seeking special permit pursuant to 1.9, to alter and expand a non-conforming structure by adding dormers at 1 Highland Street. It is increasing the nonconformity, or that's how we look at it, because space that currently is not usable becomes usable for space. It is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, so I would move approval of a special permit.
I would second the motion. Motion made and seconded to grant the special permit. Roll call, vote.
Mr. Gelati?
Yes.
Ms. Schlichty?
Yes.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Perisi?
Yes. Heard our decision's favorable. You'll receive a decision in a month or two. You'll be able to move ahead. Thank you.
Good luck.
Yeah, good luck. Okay, our next hearing is the petition of Nahid Pogomi, seeking to amend an existing variance pursuant to 1.7.4, and a variance pursuant to 3.2.1, for side yard setback, to construct an addition at 46 and 46 Rear Inglewood Road. Attorney Favazza representing.
Thank you. Let me just join as a panelist. All right, I'm gonna share my screen for the record. My name is Joel Favazza. I'm an attorney at Seaside Legal Solutions, with an address of 123 Main Street here in Gloucester, here on behalf of Nahid Pogomi, the trustee owner of 46 and 46 R Inglewood So, the proposed work is to demolish a deck on the right side of the existing structure and construct a single-level addition in its place. Then, if you went out for a site visit, you would've noticed the deck's actually already gone. There's already some site work being done. A separate building permit was pulled. Not trying to count the chickens before they hatch, but if they are fortunate enough to be able to go forward, they needed to get the earth dug before frost set in, so that's why they were doing that. That deck was coming down one way or the other, so they figured, let's get that done ahead of time. So, let me make sure no one thinks we started this project ahead of time. It was just a demolition of the deck and get the site ready.
Thank you for that explanation, because that's what I thought.
Yeah. So, we are in the R30 district. This is a corner lot that fronts on Inglewood Road and Chateau Heights. The structures exist pursuant to existing variances. The existing structure encroaches into the required front yard setback on Chateau, and although the two parcels have merged for zoning purposes, because one had a building and one was blank, even with that, it's still slightly undersized by just under 1,200 square feet. But as you can kind of see from this map, we'll talk about it later, it's one of the bigger lots in the area nonetheless. This is one of those neighborhoods that, I think, in 2008 got rezoned to where almost no lot, if any lot, actually qualifies for the square footage the zoning ordinance looks for. So, the predecessor entitled, my clients picked this property up in 2012, they received dimensional variances, almost for a rear yard for the garage, and I believe that was because, although the lots had merged, I'm guessing that the zoning board at the time took what was the old lot line between the two lots, called it a rear yard, which, you know, no, you know, note to respect, was actually wrong anyway. It would've been a side yard, because this is a corner lot, so you have the rear yard arc. Either way, they got a variance, may have the wrong yard name on it, but allowed them to build that garage. And then it also, there was a variance granted to change the use and add a second unit. This is before the ADU ordinance was in place. There was a small second unit above the garage that's not being touched, just part of this work. The work being proposed is to allow the applicants to expand the first floor, and that's going to allow for the ability to age in place in the home. Right now, the applicant's elderly mother is gonna come live with them full-time. There is a second bedroom already, but there's no room beyond that second bedroom for caretaker or any sort of like, if God forbid, at some point end up with some, you know, medical assistance. And so, all this will be primarily, and hopefully for a long time, a family room. It is designed of a size and shape that it could double as a caretaker suite if either, you know, the applicant's mother or the applicant and her husband, Rick, you know, later in life, need that kind of assistance themselves. And the floor space is gonna have a foundation underneath it, and so that's gonna add a considerable amount of basement storage to this house. If any of you have tried to rent a storage unit around town, you'll know that storage is hard to come by, both in structures and in storage facilities. So, it'd be great to have some more in the basement here. So, there is one new dimensional variance. There's a 20-foot side yard setback required. The proposed addition punches into that at its closest corner, 2 feet and about 7 inches, so 7 and 1/4 inches. So, we're less than 3 feet into that side yard setback, but because it is an enclosed structure, there's no allowance, you know, for that penetration. It does require a variance. And then, we're asking to amend the existing variances, because when you open up that can of worms, these variances, although they were specific to the garage, they did contemplate the entirety of the property, and so we want to make sure that the recontemplation of the entirety of the property still qualifies that garage to continue to exist as it is. Per usual, I have all the plans here, site plans, so this is the existing first floor, and that's the addition. They can toggle back and forth. You can see us, you know, on this plan, it's very little being bumped out. It's just an unfortunate placement of a property that's gonna punch that little side by, side yard setback. Existing second floor, oh, sorry, existing basement, now you can see that storage, so that has a considerable growth in storage for the basement level. It's gonna be great. Second floor, that's over the garage, no change, except you can see it on the roof plan for the main house, where the roof extends out for the new addition. Here are some elevations before and after, before, after. Again, this is the GIS data. That's the GIS drawing. And so, if you were standing on Inglewood, you're looking at the property, that arrow is pointing to the existing or the previously existing roof deck that's come out, and that's gonna be replaced by the structure. And then, if you're standing on Chateau, again, you can sort of see the orange arrow behind the bush showing the portion of the structure that's gonna be expanded. So, we have to go through the standards for our variance, which show that literal enforcement of the GZO would create a substantial hardship. And so, again, people really who've come to Gloucester really want to make it the place they end up, the last stop sort of thing. To do that, you have to really age in place. A literal enforcement of the ordinance would basically preclude any real expansion for habitable space. You have to basically demolish the building and start a new one, rotate it about 90 degrees, and we'll talk about that in a second. This floor area is necessary to create the space required to age in place. Again, they have the applicant's mother ready to go, and they themselves will follow. You know, time remains undefeated. And again, we have that second unit that's in place above the garage, but it's above a garage, which is not ideal for either a caretaker suite or for elderly aging in place. So, does this hardship relate to the soil condition, shape, or topography of the land or structures? Well, it's the shape of the lot plus the placement of the house on the lot. The lot is long and narrow as it goes along Chateau, like, a lot of frontage along Chateau, not a lot along Inglewood. And the house is basically rotated 90 degrees counter to what you think it would. Again, I'm guessing it's because at the time, it was two separate lots, and so it would've made sense to face it toward Inglewood, thinking the one behind would be also a separate buildable Chateau lot, until, you know, the zoning requirements increased. But not only is it facing Inglewood instead of Chateau, it's just slightly askew. So, the lines of the house do not run parallel to the lines of the property. If, you know, again, if it was as easy as you can do it on the computer, you just rotate the house about 15 degrees, I wouldn't even be here. You could just build this addition, because you'd be in line with the setbacks. And you can see here, so this is the site plan, the green, projector goes so bad, the green, or it looks like neon green, shows you the buildable envelope, and so you can see how the building is, you know, basically 90 degrees different than what would be ideal, given the merged lots. And if, you know, you can magically just pick the house up and twist it, all of a sudden, you have more than enough room for this exact same structure, or even a bigger structure or whatever it is. But again, I don't have a magic wand, so we're stuck with the orientation that the house is built in. And so, the last stop is to figure out if you grant the relief, is it gonna be a detriment to the public good? Is it going to go against, you know, fly in the face of the ordinance? So, the adjacent parcel to the right, which is the most impacted parcel, has offered their support, along with other surrounding properties. And again, the GZO is trying to encourage the most appropriate use of land, allowing people to remain in their homes, and this would accomplish that goal. This is a petition for neighborhood support, and to make that a graphic, again, the orange lines are the lots. Every blue star is an abutter who signed the petition in support. So, the neighborhood was consulted, shown plans, and all came out to support the applicant. So, again, just to repeat, the relief requested, it's one new dimensional variance, a 2-foot, 7 and 1/4-inch variance for the right side yard setback, and just to amend the existing variances to allow for this modification to the structure. With that, I thank you as always, and I will end it there.
Any questions up front by the board? All righty, we'll open the public hearing. If anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application, please come forward or raise your hand on Zoom. Anyone in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application? Seeing none, we'll close public testimony. No need for rebuttal. Discussion by the board or motion?
I just think the attorney and applicant have done their homework. I think they've consulted with the neighborhood thoroughly, and I would agree, just, I think Joel has made a good argument for hardship, the narrowness of the lot, and I would agree that the house is slightly askew, and if it was not, it would, the addition that they were adding would fit. So, I would move approval of the right side. I'm sorry, I'll, I'll make a motion if you want.
Please.
Petition of Nahid Pogomi, hopefully I pronounced that correctly, is seeking to amend existing variances and a variance for side, right side yard setback, to construct an addition at 46 to 46 Rear Inglewood Road. I would move approval of the new variance for the right side setback, and also, I don't see any reason to not amend the previous variances. I don't think they're affected by this new variance. So, I'd move approval of amending the previous variances and the right side setback variance.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. A roll call, vote.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes, for the, both variances.
Ms. Schlichty?
Yes, for all the relief requested. Good luck.
Mr. Gelati?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Perisi?
Yes, certainly met all the requirements for variance. Heard our decision's favorable. We appreciate the draft. Sure thing. Thank you very much.
Good luck.
The next hearing is the petition of Jeffrey Worthley, seeking a special permit under 1.9 and 2.4.5, to demolish and replace a pre-existing non-conforming accessory structure, a garage at 4 Hawthorne Road.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Is this on? Can you hear me? Okay. My name is Jeff Worthley. I want to thank you for hearing me tonight. I think I know most of you personally, and I want to give you credit for the work you do. I would like to make it clear that in my role as a city council, councillor, that has no impact on what we're discussing tonight. Treat me as you would any other applicant looking for relief. Thank you. 23 years ago, I bought, I'm sorry, Jeff Worthley, 4 Hawthorne Road, Gloucester. 23 years ago, I bought my home at 4 Hawthorne Road. I've lived there since. I currently live there with my two children, two teenage children, and this garage was there when I bought the house. It is what I think we refer to as a non-conforming, pre-existing use. I've barely used the garage, actually, but about 12 years ago, a friend of mine, a contractor, asked if he could use my garage in exchange for maintaining it. What I didn't know is that he filled it from wall to wall and floor to ceiling with material he got from gutouts that he did, and then he moved to Florida. And so, it was, I was, impossible to maintain this with wall to wall, ground to ceiling, piping, just safes. He's a hoarder. I had to dispose of all the material inside, which I've done. It's fallen into complete disrepair. I think I could kick it down if, or a strong wind might take it down, and for the safety of my kids, myself, and my neighbors, it needs to come down. I follow the guidance of the Building Inspector's Office in getting a demolition permit, including having exterminator confirm that there's no rodents. Thank you. We've verified that there's no electricity to the building, there's no asbestos in the building. Need to get a dumpster and take it down, but in my discussions with the Building Inspector, he did inform me that if I wanted to replace it, I could do it at the same time of taking it down, or there's this provision where, because I can't afford to replace it right now, that I could seek to get a permit from this board that would extend that for, I believe, two years. I have no intention of replacing it, but I like to preserve that right, whether it's a garage, maybe an ADU down the road for my children, or something like that. But I think that there's value in preserving the right to keep it, or replace it where it is, and that's why I'm before you tonight.
So, just, just a comment, and maybe you're gonna get there. We don't have any plans.
I'm gonna, let me address that right off the bat.
Yeah, sure.
So, I have a feeling your application's not gonna accomplish what you hoped it would, because under the 2.4.5, you have to, one, present what you were gonna build, because it's a tear-down-and-replace. The only way to preserve your rights is to get a permit under 2.4.5, which is, so what would have to be before us is, hey, I want to tear this building down. Now, you can tear it down anytime with a demolition permit, but you lose your grandfather rights. But to preserve those, you have to present to us a plan for the new building, and the ordinance also states that, once you tear it down, you have to replace it as expeditiously as possible. It doesn't give you a clear two years to do it kind of thing, and we don't even have a, we could approve it, and I'm sure there wouldn't be any, like, push to say, hey, you better get going on this, and you probably get your two years, but we would have to have something that we're approving that goes along with it.
I appreciate that. I thought I included in there, maybe I didn't, a drawing of the existing structure with measurements, and I'm not an architect, but I thought that would've been sufficient to say...
It would, it wouldn't have to be plans of what you want to do in the future.
Yeah, plus it's, plus you really, and I can be corrected by one of my colleagues, but I'm pretty sure we need a site plan, because we need to approve where the garage is and where it's gonna go, right?
That's not in the package, though. I, I do believe I put in pictures of the property.
There's pictures of the property, yeah.
Pictures, not a site plan.
Right.
But I...
And there's the, there, you know, the city map. You can take an old mortgage plot plan that you have and use that to show where the building is on the lot, or...
What we have to do, what would be the sensible thing tonight is, one, to continue it, you know, doing it next week, anyway, and give you a chance to... And give you a chance to confer again with the building department. Think about what you'd want to put and propose something. Otherwise, put the whole thing off until you are more ready.
So I thought in the plan, in the documents, there was a graph.
There is that. Can you see that?
Yeah, that doesn't work for what you need.
Well, it doesn't really show it where it is on the lot, like where is that in relation to the house and the.
The street names, the bottom has the street, two streets that it.
Jeff, a site plan shows your lot exactly. And it shows where the garage is on your lot, and it dimensions where the garage is in relationship to your lot. That's what we need to see.
And what you have doesn't qualify for that. Okay.
Yeah.
Well, the site.
We could approve a simple garage plan. You don't have to say you're doing an ADU at this point. We could, but we'd have to be approving a structure and have everything we need. And then the timeline thing could tie you up, or hem you up, and we wouldn't want to see that. So it wouldn't be the worst thing. We'd give a continuance, push you out to January or whatever. Give you a chance to think about that and see what you could pull together and come back. I don't see us, I don't see anyone, they would lie you to tear it down. No one's going to be jamming the right-of-way thing down your throat because it's not a new house or something. It's just a shit, a garage, so. And we could get that possibly approved.
Thank you.
And buy you some more time, so.
I appreciate that. I am eager to take it down from a safety perspective. And also, you have a letter, I think you're in your packet, from the owner of the property next door, Dean Sala. I don't know if you saw that in the packet. He wrote a letter.
I spoke to your direct neighbors. They have no issue either.
Yeah, thank you.
Sure.
We'd like to see it.
He's been pressing me.
Before us, where we can get you that couple of years, hopefully, without losing any of your rights. So let's work, work on that with the department. Like Catherine said, just a mortgage plot plan that they used. That'll lease your measurements, and we'd have more to approve.
Okay. My amateur drawing probably wasn't sufficient for what you need in terms of approval. Is there any conditional approval you could give pending that mortgage document or something like that? The only reason I ask is the building, you know, a strong wind or storm will knock this down.
Yeah.
I just want to be super careful.
That won't jeopardize your rights because you are in the process of applying. So we're going to push it out to January thirtieth. We can have a motion for that regard, and then we'll.
Thank you.
Get you organized.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. So for the position of Jeffrey Worthley seeking a special permit, demolish and replace existing non-conforming accessory structure at Four Hawthorne, I would move to push this one out to our second meeting in January, January thirtieth.
Thank you.
I second the motion to continue.
We have a motion made and seconded to continue to January thirtieth, the application of Jeffrey Worthley. Roll call vote.
Ms. Schlichty?
Yes.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Jalati?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes. That's continued. Our next application is the petition of Russell Zide and Jennifer Rem, seeking a special permit under 2.4.5 to demolish and replace a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family home at thirty-nine Cliff Road. This is a.
You hold that mic also when you talk to the running chairman, if you would.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ryan McShara of Architecture, eight to ten Martin Street in Essex, Massachusetts. And I'm here representing Russell and Jennifer in their application to demolish and rebuild their single-family home at number thirty-nine Cliff Road in Gloucester. It is a pre-existing, non-conforming building on a non-conforming lot. The lot lacks the required depth for the zone. And the building violates the front yard setback and the side yard setback. Front yard setback, which fronts on Briar Neck Road, and the setback directly opposite of that. We are on a lot that has two frudges here, one along Thatcher Road and one, again, along Briar Neck Road. So the site plan is laid out as such with two front yard setbacks and two side yard setbacks. The building is being expanded, and we are raising the building in height. But we are not reducing the dimensional non-conformities any greater. And the building height will comply with the zoning ordinance when we are complete with the project. Let's see. We did receive a letter of support from the neighbor today, and we forwarded that onto the board. I'm not sure if that made it to you guys in time, but we did just receive one letter of support today. And we hope that you guys will consider that as part of your process. And we do believe that the board can approve this special permit because the building as proposed is no more substantially detrimental to the neighborhood. We've provided a full proposed site plan for you guys' review, as well as a full set of architectural plans. So we'd be happy to answer the board's questions about the proposed project, the layout of the site, or the layout of the building. I'm good.
Good job.
Which neighbor?
It was Andrew and Jane Knott, who are at forty-one Briar Cliff Road, within the residential development, directly adjacent to our building.
Any other questions at this time? No? Okay. You can have a seat. And we'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application? Anyone in favor? Please come forward or raise your hand if you're on Zoom. Anyone in favor? Seeing none, is there any opposition to the application? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Raise your hand on Zoom or come forward. Seeing no one, close public hearing. Discussion by the board. I would just like to say, you know, when you look at the overlay, it's minimal, the expansion. And it does stay within the original setbacks, so it's no more crazy, but.
I would agree.
I just have two questions. Perhaps you could answer. Did you speak to the people up Cliff Road to the, as you drive into the driveway to the right? I guess it's labeled as number thirty-seven?
Yep. So we did send out personal letters to each one of the neighbors. We didn't have a chance to review it with them directly, but we did try to reach out and get in touch with all the direct neighbors and abutters to the project.
And the second question is, when I was out there, I couldn't quite figure out the bowtie nature of the lot. And is the present yard really off, out of bounds? You know, it looks like it doesn't fit with the plan here. What's mode?
Exactly, right? Yeah. So this parcel here is where Briar Cliff Road sort of spins off and goes down back towards Thatcher Street, Thatcher Road, excuse me. And yes, the lot line really does step back far towards the building in comparison to sort of the way they use the yard and the front yard and those kind of things. But the yard is accurately represented on the site plan for what we're proposing.
I'm just trying to get my site view in sync with this. In the backyard, there's a fairly large rectangular mowed area. In the corner, I think there's like a galvanized feed bin, but it, which looks like it's much wider and deeper than this does. So is the, is the area that's mowed all on your lot? Or is the lot actually smaller than what we see in the backyard?
Yeah. Yeah, it quite possibly could be that there's more mowed yard than past our lot line. But I can't say for certain how much farther that goes.
Thank you.
Any other discussion or questions?
I was just going to note that, well, it's, it's not too much bigger a foot than what's really there because you're going over that little one-story garage, and they're bumping out a little bit on the, on the right-hand side. But I, you know, I think it's really a lovely plan, actually. It looks, it looks very nice. I think it fits in very well with the neighborhood. I don't, I don't think it's going to substantially impact anybody around you in an adverse way, so. I think, I think it's a nice project. I don't know.
Okay, if there's no more discussion, we'll entertain a motion. And we are straight 2.4.5, demolish and replace pre-existing, non-conforming.
I could do that. In the matter of the petitioner, Jeffrey Worth, oops, petitioner Russell Zide and Jennifer Rem, seeking permit GZO 1.9 and 2.4.5 to replace and demolish, to depalish and replace the pre-existing structure at thirty-nine Cliff Road. I move that we approve the plans as presented.
Second.
If a motion made and seconded, we'll have a roll call vote.
Ms. Schlichty?
Yes.
Mr. Nyman?
Yeah, I would move approval also. It's not substantially more detrimental than the existing house to the neighborhood.
Mr. Jalati?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
I also vote yes. I agree. It's an increase in non-conformity, but not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. And a reminder, under 2.4.5, you will, when you tear this down, you are required to rebuild it as soon as possible, without delay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Good luck.
Okay. Our next hearing is the petitioner Murlock LLC, seeking a special permit under 1.8, 1.9, and 2.4.3 to alter and expand a non-conforming structure, a change of use, and variances pursuant to 1.7, a lot area per dwelling, lot coverage, and side and rear setbacks in order to convert a mixed-use building into a three-family dwelling and to construct a carport at sixty-four East Main Street.
Good evening, members of the board. Is this on?
Good, yep.
Great. My name is Miranda Samasco. I'm with Glofsky and Glofsky at Eight Washington Street in Beverly on behalf of the applicant, Murlock LLC. And this application, which involves the conversion of an existing, non-conforming building, mixed-use building with two residences and one commercial coffee shop, which was the former coffee shop known as Zeke's. Zeke's business has closed. The owner wishes to convert the property to three residential units. And by way of doing that, have a pretty substantial alteration of the building without any expansion of the existing structure. And the architect, Thad Samasco, from SV Design is here. He'll walk you through the plans. The, so the application really consists of, one, the request for the change in use from one non-conforming use to another. And then we do require some variances, some dimensional variances. In order to do that, the first being a variance for the lot requirement for per-residential dwelling. It's a very small corner lot. And the deficit in the square footage is about one thousand square feet. If we add a third unit, right now it's conforming, but the third unit pushes it over the top. And then the balance of the variances spelled out in the application relate to a proposed carport. The back of the, of the property is going to be converted into a new parking area. So the owner is intent on getting all of the parking off of the street and to make a safe and attractive parking area for tenants. And the proposal is to construct a twenty-two-by-thirty-nine-and-a-half-foot carport toward the rear of the property. Because the lot is such a small lot, that will require some dimensional variances. And as spelled out in the application, we think that those variances meet the criteria under the ordinance. Before I get to that, I thought it'd be helpful for Thad to walk you through the plans and to answer any questions.
Thank you. I've been informed by text that the public online is not hearing clearly what people are saying. I'm going to ask James, are you experiencing that?
No, I can hear everything.
Yeah. You're in as a panelist. It may be different than Zoom, but we all need to be into the mics closer. It's the only way it works when it goes out on the Zoom. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thad Samasco, SV Design in Beverly, architect, and working on this project on sixty-four East Main. You all know, like, probably the Zeke's building, it's on that intersection. And it's a three-story building that has, let me get to the, as you see here on the upper-left screen, it's a brick, a beautiful little brick building. And it has, some additions are added to it later, which was what you see on the right, the one-story piece. And then there's a two-story or a three-piece behind it. As Miranda mentioned, this is, it's built into a hill, so the building is actually two stories in the rear and three stories in the front. It currently consists of the two apartments, two two-bedroom apartments on the second and third floor, and the diner space on the first floor. And the proposal is to convert the diner space into a dwelling unit. Given the condition of the additions that were done on the right, our proposal is to remove them completely and put in a new three-story addition. There's actually a slight decrease in footprint because we're going to hold the addition back slightly from the brick building so that it's, the brick building will stand out a little more prominently, ever so slightly more prominently. And like the current format where you have a one-story and the second and third floor are further back, we're following that format. We're just not pushing the second and third floor as far back as they are now. Part of what's happening right now is on the upper right, you can see there's an outdoor stairway that's a little bit unsightly and a little bit unsafe. And the big ventilator for the grill for the diner, all that's going away. It'll be nice and clean. The dumpsters, the trash you see on the bottom right, the red, you know, trash, all that stuff goes away. The parking in front of the building goes away, becomes a nice terrace area for the resident on the first floor. So frankly, you know, it'll be nice and, it'll sort of clean, clean it up a little bit. As Miranda mentioned, out back on the bottom right is a photograph. There's a timber retaining wall that's about, you know, starting to fail a little. We're going to dig back into there and bury our carport into the hill. So the backside of the carport might be a couple, three, four feet out of the ground so that the rear abutter actually, you can see there's like a sunshade device there now. Will actually be lower than that with our, with our carport. So it's really kind of buried in the hill. There'll be a roof there that'll probably be pretty good for some solar panels someday. So that gets the cars out of sight. It gets, theoretically, it might snow someday. And it'll be nice to have your car out of the snow. And that, so that's how we're working with the plan. The bottom left photo is the back of the building, which has this one-story addition. You can see on the left there, the white two-story piece, and that's the part that's being torn down and redone. We'll be able to have one really good quality means-of-egress stairway. The building will be required to be sprinkled, so all that will be happening as part of the project. To be a really nice, neat, you know, cleanup of the building, but still in the spirit of Gloucester with balconies, the traditional materials, so forth. So the, so these are the existing four plans on your packet. And I would say is that, that right side you see will just be extended ever so slightly forward as part of our, as part of our plan. So it makes for three reasonably nice-sized two-bedroom units. I wouldn't call them generous, but they're not so not tight. They'd be really kind of nice units with some view and some balcony view across the landing to the water beyond. and some balcony view across the landing to the water beyond. So the red, as you can see, is, that's the additions, which are mostly on the foot, actually on the footprint of what's there, just a slight expansion forward on the second floor. Well, we kind of wrecked it with the red hatching, but the idea is on the ground floor to continue the red brick and keep that spirit. And then up above is a pergola deck system that would, with lots of doors and glass to have that view through to the front. That's the general idea. As you can see, the hill comes up behind the building, and the bottom right is actually the rear view. We're still two stories. We've still held the addition back lower than the main building. I think it's 20, I think in the back, it's 27 feet by your zoning definition, the building height. From the front sidewalk, it's 31.9. From the back, it's 21 feet tall. So it's, it's very modest. I don't, you won't notice any real difference in the massing of the building or the height of the building. And then the carport was mentioned, shows up here. You can see, a little hard to see, the upper-left is actually the height of the rear of the building where, there's already a six-foot fence there with a lattice topper. Our wall is actually going to be lower than that, and then the roof comes up at a very slight roof pitch. So really, I think we're, we're trying to be as low-key and out of the, out of the view of our butter behind us as we possibly can. So that's the general proposal. Can you take any questions you might have?
Questions of the architect? Okay, we're good?
Yeah.
Any more presentation?
I would just say that the owner, this representative, is not able to be here in person this evening, but I was informed that she notified the butters in writing with snail mail. Didn't receive any responses via email to the notices that went out, but there was a good attempt to reach out to neighbors and get feedback.
Thank you. Okay, we'll open public testimony. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the project, please come forward. Can you take your screen down? Because we can't, I can't see the public. There you go. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application? I have one hand raised. Bill F., could you bring him in? His hands down. Hey? Oh, here he is. Okay. Bill, can you hear us? You're muted.
Okay, got it.
There you go.
All right, thank you. I thank you for recognizing me. I am in a butter, and I did respond to...
We need your name and address, please, first.
Yes, Bill Funk, 74 East Main Street, Gloucester. All right. I appreciate your recognizing me, and I did get a notice from the person who purchased the property, and I would have liked to have heard the presentation, but no one for this entire meeting has held that contact mic within close proximity to their mouth to be heard. But I did see the drawings, and I am able to understand, and I think it's a wonderful improvement to the neighborhood. I think it will add to the value of the property and improve the look of the neighborhood. And I hope that you give approval to this.
Thank you. Could you clarify? Can you hear me?
I can hear you clearly. You're the only one who pulls the mic to your mouth.
Okay, I think it's a new mic at the podium, brand-new, and we're just not sure why.
Well, it's a contact-type of mic, which needs to be almost on someone's lips. So that's the problem.
Okay, well, thank you for calling, being on.
Yeah, and that's why Jeff was contacting you. I had texted him.
All righty.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the project? Anyone else? None. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the project? Any opposition? Please come up or raise your hand if you're on Zoom. No opposition? Close the public hearing. Discussion?
I think it's, I think it's a nice project, actually. Well, I think it will tie in nicely with all the other buildings there on that section of East Main Street. We do have to consider the six factors, you know, for, for change of use like this. So I'm just going to briefly touch on them as I see them. Social, economic, and community needs that will be served. We're certainly adding another, while it's unfortunate to lose Zeke's, which is, you know, a favorite restaurant, I think, for a lot of us. It is nice to have another residential dwelling unit and to increase the size and function, functionality of the two units that are already there. I'm glad to see that you're adding four parking spaces in the rear because there is not a lot of parking. There's parking in a lot across the street, but it's, it's a pretty busy area, so I think that, that improves the traffic phone safety by putting the traffic, four parking spots in the rear. There's certainly adequate public utilities in the street there. I think that it fits in with the neighborhood character and structure. There are a lot of, there's a, there's a number of multifamilies right there in that section of East Main Street in that area. I think that you're not adversely impacting the quality of the natural environment. It's already built out. It's just a little chopped up. I think this is going to add a nice aesthetic to the building. And potential fiscal impact, probably won't have much of a fiscal impact. I mean, I don't know if it's going to increase real estate tax values or not, but certainly not going to hurt it. So I, I think, I think that that project meets the criteria for the granting of a special permit for a change of use from a mixed-use to a three-unit building, and I'll, I'll support that.
Anyone else?
Just a comment. I think it's really tastefully done, and I really like how it presents on East Main. Pretty thoughtful. So anyway, I think it's a pretty tasteful building that you're putting...
Yeah, I appreciate the bookwork.
Yeah, the brick and just the way it steps back, you know, I mean, just some of the comments that you made. I can, I'd see it even before you said it. Anyway, I just thought it was pretty thoughtfully done, and it's not always thoughtfully done, in my estimation.
Okay, well, no other discussion. We'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion on the petition of Murlock LLC seeking a special permit to alter and expand a non-conforming structure and for a change of use to allow for a three-unit building and variances for lot area per dwelling, lot coverage, and side and rear yard setbacks so the applicant can convert their mixed-use building to a three-family dwelling unit. I would move approval of all the relief requested for the reasons stated.
I would second that, all the relief.
We have a motion made and seconded. Roll call vote.
Ms. Schlichty?
Yes.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Gelati?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
I also vote yes. You've heard our decision's favorable. We'd appreciate a draft decision that we can work with from your office. Thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Oh, very welcome. Yeah, sincere, yeah.
Okay. Two more to go. Petitioners, 14 Prospect Street LLC seeking a variance pursuant to 1.9 for lot area, lot width, front, side setbacks, and percentage of vegetative cover, and a special permit under 1.10 and 3.1.6 to exceed the maximum building height in order to convert a commercial-use building into a multifamily dwelling with eight units at 14 Prospect Street. Attorney Braker, I believe, is representing. Is she on? Is, yeah, she's there. You're going to make her a panelist.
Good evening. I'm sorry I'm not there in person. I am not feeling well, so I figured for everybody's sake, I would stay at home. Attorney Megan Braker of Plain Gardner &amp; O'Connor, 96 Middle Street. Mr. Chairman, before I begin my presentation, I did just want to, because it seems like there's some feedback, just let you know, I can very clearly hear everyone on Zoom and every member of the board. It's, it's only the microphone at the podium, and I, I don't know what other people are getting, but I'm getting like one word and then can't hear anything for, it seems like maybe 30 seconds, and then another word comes in. Just wanted to give you that feedback in case you were curious as to what was going on. So, as, as stated, I represent 14 Prospect Street LLC. My client is seeking overall the proposed project as he want, would like to convert the Amvett's building, which he, he bought this property about a year ago. He would like to eventually convert it into eight units of residential living. Obviously, that's going to need city council relief. However, given the shape and size of both the building and the property, zoning relief is also required prior to being able to go before the city council. I do want to make it very clear to the board, again, I apologize for my voice, there's almost entirely no change of, to the outside of the building. The building is already, there's no increase in height. There's going to be no increase in width. However, as I stated, because of the size and shape of both the building and the property, relief is needed, especially when you look at how close it is to the beginning, the front of the property and to one of the side yard setbacks. The building is in, excuse me, as I said, we're not changing the footprint. Variance should be granted because literal enforcements of the, of the zoning ordinances would have a substantial hardship on the applicant. The building has been there for a significant period of time. You know, it was built in, I believe, somewhere around 1900. I'm not sure when everything, you know, how the building changed over the years. There were, there was no prior zoning relief granted. However, in converting the building, we do believe overall this project is going to be in keeping with the neighborhood. You know, there are mostly multifamily buildings in the neighborhood. In addition to that, a lot of the lots, from what I have seen, are definitely odd in size and shape. I apologize for that. And therefore, we're seeking the relief for the lot area, variances for the lot area, lot width, side yard setback, front yard, and percentage of vegetative cover. My client is not going to change anything to the actual land of the property, but as I'm sure all of you saw when you went there, it's already covered completely in pavement. The only real grass is there's some on one side, and then in the front yard, the building is also very close to the front of the street. And as I said, the only changes to the outside of the building are going to be minimal, and it's really just going to be updating and making sure that there are exits from the second floor of the building. So at this point, I would ask, entertain any questions. I would just simply ask the board if any citizens do have any comments or questions, if someone could just repeat them so, to make sure I'm hearing them properly.
Hey, thank you. Yeah, to be clear with everybody, we are sort of the cleanup board so that this can go to the city council for a major project. We're just being asked to approve what's sitting there, how it sits there, and...
No.
Pieces of zoning it doesn't meet, so just to be clear. We'll take public testimonies. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the project, please raise your hand or come forward. Anyone in favor? Seeing none, is there anyone in opposition to the project? Anyone wants to speak in opposition? Please come forward. I'll ask you to take the mic right up to your mouth, please.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Avotlo Skola. I live at 24 Prospect Street. I've lived there for approximately 47 years. I've seen the Amvett's way back when, and every time they've had a party, they can only put, say, six, seven, eight cars without blocking another person. There's no way that they're going to put eight parking spots in that unit, besides the fact that I'm told that they need to put a dumpster in there for eight units. If they put a dumpster in, that's going to take up a parking spot. And from what I'm told, this, I thought they were putting a fourth floor on there. Am I incorrect about that?
Yes.
There's not a fourth?
There's no proposal to really alter the building itself.
So they're going to put eight units in three floors? Is that...
That's what they're saying. That part of the project will go to city council. We're not reviewing the number, yeah.
That setting instead. I can't, I have a two-family and three-family house in my neighborhood, that in the two-family, there's five families living in there, and in the three-family, there's five families living in there. Most of the houses in the neighborhood are two-family houses, except for McPherson Park. That's government property. But all the rest of the, on the street are two- to three-family units, and some of them are one-family units. So eight units in there, there's not enough parking on the street right now. Every morning I get up, the street is full. I have a contractor coming in. They're reciting my house, and he has a problem finding a parking spot. So that's what nobody living in the, in the old Amvett's building. So where are these cars going to park? Eight units. That tells me that they're going to have anywhere from eight to 24 cars, parking in the parking lot, parking on the street. I am completely objected to it.
I understand.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
So they, with eight units, and this being a R5, they would have to demonstrate parking for eight cars.
Isn't it a car and a half per unit?
No, it's only one car per unit in R5, yeah.
There's no way that you can put eight cars in that driveway without blocking another car.
Now, they have to, they, they show a plan of the parking, and they do, because it's a major project, they have to meet all the proper-sized spaces and the ability to turn around. So when it goes before the council, their, their engineers will have to document that they can get the spaces, or they won't get approval, so.
And do they have to supply dumpster for eight units?
Do they have what?
A dumpster, the rubbish.
I, again, that'll be, that'll be part of the application to the council. All we're doing here tonight is just saying that the building where it sits is okay to still sit there, really.
The building is fine where it is, but I can't see eight units in, have you decided?
No, I get it. That'll be the, something the city council decides. Yeah, we don't. We just say, we're just approving the building because it was old and non-conforming, just like everyone else's house on Prospect Street. We're just approving it as it sits so that they can go to the city council for the big hearing.
And isn't, I'm dropping positive, but it used to be, that was a carpenter for years. Two egresses per unit?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
That's what's required, yes.
Yeah, for a building code.
There's only two egresses for the building.
Yeah, but again, that's going to go to city council, but if you look at their plans, it's all laid out how there's two egresses from each unit, right? So I, I understand you don't like it, honest. And if I was probably where you're living, I probably wouldn't like it either. So we're not, we're not trying to make you like it, just so you understand.
Now, when it goes before the city council, is that another meeting that I have to attend to?
Yeah, that'll be in the future, once they decide to apply. This, this doesn't have them build anything yet.
Yeah.
All set?
I guess I've said my...
I think you have. You said it well.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Megan Braker, you have opportunity for rebuttal?
Unfortunately, Mr. Chairman, I heard, I'm gathering there were some issues with the parking, I heard very little of what the citizen said, I do apologize.
He was right into it.
And he was right on it, yeah.
I'm sorry.
I think he was, we explained it well, that you have an opportunity before the council, most things will be vetted.
Yeah, if the issue was with, if the issue's with the parking or the number of units, I'm happy to address that at city council, and I do apologize, I would be there in person, obviously, this, I'm not gonna do this again, so I do apologize, I just could not hear what he was saying.
Yep.
So looking at the plans, Megan, there's two units in the basement, and then the first floor has two two-bedroom units in the studio, and the third floor, two two-bedrooms, so that's how you get to eight, okay, yeah.
Exactly, the first and second floor are gonna be exactly the same, it's the basement that's gonna have just the two units.
Yeah, yeah.
Good. Any right-of-passage that exists would continue to exist, yeah. That would be on the deed. No, I don't believe so.
Oh, that was good, I was gonna-
Okay.
I can make a motion if you want.
Go ahead.
So, petition of 14 Prospect Street LLC seeking variances pursuant to 1.9 for lot area, lot width, front-side setbacks, percentage of vegetative cover, special permit pursuant to 1.10 and 3.1.6 to exceed the maximum building height in order to convert a commercial building, use, commercial use building into a multifamily dwelling with eight units at 14 Prospect Street. It's not uncommon for us, in this kind of situation, that all these variances are created because of the change of use. There's nothing happening to the exterior of the building. It's very common for us to approve these kinds of variances so that they can go to city council for the hearing that would happen there. So I would move approval for all these variances. And for the 3.1.6, the special permit, because once again, the building height is not changing, it's just changing use, which forces it, loses its grandfathered status. So I would move approval of the variances and also the special permit.
Second that motion.
No.
We have a motion made and seconded. Roll call vote.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Jalati?
Yes.
Ms. Lipti?
Uh, yes, I think the hardship is the building itself.
Yes, yes.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Are there decisions favorable? We appreciate a draft.
Of course, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Okay, last hearing of the evening is the petition, Greg Souza, seeking a special permit under 2.4.5 to demolish and replace a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family home in a variance pursuant to 5.5 subsection 17 from floodplain overlay requirements at 3 Kirk Road. Attorney Sheedy, I believe.
Can't hear you.
Sad, Jake?
Well, I can't hear Attorney Sheedy.
We can't either.
It hasn't started yet. Oh.
No, still can't hear you.
He's muted right now.
It's probably your microphone setting, bottom left of your screen, there's a little arrow next to the microphone, and you can select your device.
It does not apply. X is an A, don't say that to me. You're an attorney, you need to represent things correctly.
We're gonna try to send you a new email link, that maybe you can get off there and reload it, Mike, because we can't hear you at all. Can you raise your hand if you can hear us? Ms. Sheedy? Thank you. Hands lit, raised. Already in. Yep, she's gonna try.
I'm gonna show her my screen that has the directions to call in.
It was grand. You know, his touch about-
I think of the little tin-
The tin and the way that-
Flavor and the-
How that- Oh, I never kept it framed. Yep. Well, you think about all the things that I kid-
I'll call, I'll find his mother.
No, you can't.
I think she called in, there's an attendee on the phone now, so you might have to bring her in.
Star nine, star nine, it'll let, raise your hand. So her hand's raised now, can you bring her in? Yeah, that's what I mean. Yeah, you gotta turn off the phone thing.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, awesome, great. Sorry about that. Um, may I share my screen?
You gotta mute your computer.
Okay.
I don't know if you can share your screen over the, yeah, on your computer you should be able to, yeah. Go ahead.
Okay. Is that better?
Yep.
Okay. Just get the plans up. All right, can you see my screen?
Yep.
Okay, good. Let me just get down to the site plan here. Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I apologize for that technical difficulty, I was just on a Zoom call today, and I had no issues, so, not sure what's happening. Uh, my name is Willimine Ashidi, I'm an attorney with an office at 76 Main Street in Rockport, appearing for the petitioner, Greg Souza, regarding his application for Kirk Road in Gloucester, 3 Kirk Road. Uh, the petitioner is seeking to demolish the existing original 1950s single-family home and shed located at 3 Kirk Road, which abuts the Mill River, and to replace them with a new single-family home as shown on the plans. The 7,740 square foot lot is presently non-conforming in size in the R10 zone. It requires a 10,000 square foot lot size in this zone. The existing structure is also non-conforming for front yard setback, the new structure will eliminate this non-conformity. All other dimensional requirements will also be conforming, thereby rendering the property more conforming than what presently exists. Required front and rear yard setbacks are 20 feet, and the side yard setbacks are 10 feet. The current dwelling has an 18.6 foot front yard setback, here, and a 57 foot rear yard setback, a 14.7 foot left side yard, and a 15.9 foot right side yard. The property is also conforming as to lot coverage, with a total of 14% coverage, where 30% is allowed. The height of the present structure is 23.4, approximately 23.4 feet, where 30 feet is allowed. The required lot width is 65 feet, and the existing width is 85, approximately 85 feet, which will not change. Required frontage is 65 feet, and the frontage is currently approximately 85 feet, and that will also not change. Setbacks of the new structure will be improved over that which currently exists, or will remain compliant with the dimensional requirements as shown on the plans submitted by the petitioner, thereby rendering this property more conforming in those aspects. The new structure will have a 20.3 foot front yard setback, a 48.7 foot rear yard setback, a left side of 10 feet, I'm sorry, went too far, 10 feet, and a 10-foot, 4-foot right side setback. Lot coverage will remain compliant at 27.2%, and the new home will be 29.9 feet high. The new home, just go back to this photo here, which shows you the existing home from Kirk Road and the new home on the left. The new home has been lifted approximately nine feet, and has been designed to withstand flood surge. The first floor of the new dwelling- The first floor of the new dwelling will be dedicated to garage space, utilities, storage, and entry to the second level. The project will provide four new garage spaces. The off-street parking improvements will greatly improve the existing neighborhood character and vehicular safety on this narrow street. The existing structures have been determined to require improvements for flood safety and updated code requirements. The new home will be energy efficient with modern utilities and building specifications. A special permit pursuant to the Gloucester zoning ordinance 1.9 and 2.4.3 for the construction and extension of a non-conforming structure should be issued to the applicant, because the proposed project is not more detrimental to the neighborhood than the pre-existing conforming structure, and will provide significant improvement on off-street parking with the proposed garage spaces, again, on this narrow street. The project will also meet the requirements of GZO 2.4.5, as the replacement structure is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. And, uh, the demolition of the existing structures will not take place unless and until the project is approved by the board. The construction of the new structures will follow the demolition of the existing structures as expeditiously as possible. And I just want to show here a copy of the FEMA firm map, so if required, here, under section 5.5 of the zoning ordinance related to floodplain overlay, you can see here that the property is located not in an AE or the other zone, it's located in an X zone, an area of minimal flood hazard. Entire site is below the elevation 13, however, this FEMA map shows the locus to be in an area of minimal flood hazard known as Zone X. As the new section 5.5 of the ordinance addresses improvements in the VE and the AE zone, this property is in neither of those zones, so this section arguably does not apply to the project. And I believe the building commissioner did his own research and agreed with that analysis. I'm just going to get out of this, I can.
Yeah, the 5.5 is not before us, it doesn't apply to this.
Yeah.
It was just in the ad.
Yep, because we weren't sure at the time, it's a brand-new ordinance, and we weren't sure at the time, so we did make the application for it. Uh, the architect is available this evening, as well as the owner of the property, if the board has any questions.
I don't think we have any questions on the plan.
Now that the floodplain overlay doesn't apply, that was really where my questions were, but where it's not applicable. So really, you're just looking for a special permit to demolish and rebuild non-conforming structure, and the only non-conformity is lot size. Otherwise-
That's correct.
-this new structure's gonna be completely within the setbacks.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
All righty. We'll open up for public testimony. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application? People in favor, please raise your hand or come forward to the podium. Done? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application? Please come forward, or raise your hand. Any opposition? Seeing none, our closed public testimony? Discussion by the board?
Well, I commend you keeping it at 30 feet or below, because most of the structures that we see that are trying to get up out of the floodplain and- that we see that are trying to get up out of the floodplain and have the first floor, you know, be for parking or water can wash through it, they either go to a flat roof or have to exceed the height limit, so did a good job of keeping it at that. It's rather, I, I think it's, there's a lot of big structures down there that, that are kind of similar in size to this structure. And you're seeing more and more modern structures down there, yeah?
Yeah, so.
I think it's.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, I, I think it will fit in fine with the neighborhood.
Yeah, so I would concur with that. I'm not a big fan of design, but you haven't asked me if I'm a big fan of the design. But I, I had my concerns, and I spent some time in the, I mean, I know the neighborhood anyway, but I spent some time, and there are a number of homes of similar characters, what I would call them. In fact, your direct-to-butter has a long, I, this is a one-story, not a two-story, so anyway, I was satisfied in, in that it's not a unique house in that area, in my estimation, as a number of homes of similar character, so, yeah, we're not here to judge the character of, I'm not here to judge the character of homes, so.
I don't, yeah, everything looks good to me, I just have a point of personal interest. I see the water heater, the boiler, and the AC units are on the first level. I thought, well, I don't know that there's any regulation, but it, I thought a best practice was to move those up out of the flood zone, so they don't get wrecked. But it's not relevant. Now, with a discussion, I'll entertain a motion to approve special permit, the 2.4.5.
On the petition of Greg Souza seeking a special permit to demolish and replace a pre-existing non-conforming, single-family home at Three Kirk Road, I would move approval of the special permit. I think while it is, intensifies the non-conformity, it does not substantially more detrimental than what is currently existing there, so I'd move approval for relief as requested.
Yeah, I would second that as well, it's not.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded.
Second that, I don't think it's substantially more detrimental to the neighborhoods, and just a reminder on the 2.4.5, that it needs to be done expeditiously as well, the tear-down, the rebuild.
Thank you, Michael. Roll call vote?
Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Ms. Lichty?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Gelati?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes. Heard our decision's favorable, appreciate a draft. Ms. Sheedy?
Yes, absolutely, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Okay.
Good night.
Eight hearings, 8:34.
Not bad.
Pretty good.
Good night, bye-bye.
Remind you, in January, two meetings back in January, we go to our regular schedule, we'll have election of offices for the 2025, and if no one has anything else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second.
Roll call vote?
Mr. Gelati?
Yes.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Ms. Lichty?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes, we are adjourned.